States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And good morning. This is Mahoney County Commissioner's hearing room, regular meeting number twenty-eight, Thursday, July fourteenth, ten a.m., slightly after. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go forward. Approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number twenty-seven, Thursday, July seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and approval of Bill's payments, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes, advertisement for bid sanitary.
Morning, everybody. Item number one is the Old Winter Trail Pump Station Replacement Project. This is improvement number five-twenty-one, and this is the rebid of this project.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Number one advertise, I mean, advertisement for bids, number one, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved advertisement for bids. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes. Journal entries, number one, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved journal entries. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes, number three agreements, I mean, number two agreements, A through G. And Convention and Visitors Bureau, number one.
Good morning. This is an agreement with the Public Broadcasting Station in Pittsburgh, WQED, for a series of advertisements on their travel and tourism programming over the next few months in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars non-general.
Okay, thank you. B, engineers, Pat?
Commissioners, letter B is an agreement with Youngstown Area Electrical Joint Apprentice and Training Committee for the purchase of real property needed for the Western Reserve Road widening project from Market Street to South Avenue in the amount of ten thousand six hundred forty dollars. These are non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. C, facilities, Jim?
It'll be all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Morning, Commissioner.
Alan.
A C is an agreement with Barrett Brothers Sawmill for double cabinet doors at domestic court in the amount of one thousand eight hundred eighty-four and twenty-four cents of general.
Okay, thank you. D and E, JJC?
Good morning. D is an agreement with WT Leon's Tri-Area Electric Company to install new electrical lines for parking lot lights in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and ten dollars general fund. And E is an agreement with Astrid Beulah County Court to house up to three youth at the detention center at a rate of two hundred and fourteen dollars per youth per day for three years payable to Mahoney County.
Okay, thank you. And F and G, Joe? Sheriff's Department?
F is an amendment number three with the Trinity Service Group that provides jail food for the inmates for pricing non-general. And G is an agreement with the PAK Correctional Consulting LLC to conduct a pre-audit in the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars non-general.
Okay, thank you. Number two agreements, A through G, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved agreements. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes. Number three, change orders, A, EMA ONB grants.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Robin?
This is just a delay in the procurement process here. We have had a continuing contract with the current vendor to service the sirens. We're being required to get bids from three vendors, and that's becoming a bit of a challenge. Should move through the process as soon as we do that.
Okay, thank you. Three change orders, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved change. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes. Number one, resolutions additions, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved resolutions. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes. No, that's all. Number two, resolutions, A, Commissioners, O and B?
I'm gonna let Hannah handle it.
Hannah, do you wanna handle this one?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. This is the resolution to approve the agreements and change order and expenditures with the following to assist with COVID-nineteen public health and funded by the American Rescue Plan in the following amounts. We have red zone charities and the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for office furnishings. Red Zone Charities will receive five thousand dollars on behalf of the Little Redman Football Program. United Way is a seven thousand nine hundred dollar change order just from one area that we had approved to another area of the agreement. Orbin Township Park is awarded one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a restroom building project. I spoke with Mr. Slagle this morning, and he wanted to send his gratitude and thank you to the Commissioners who said, "I want to make it today, but you will be invited to the groundbreaking." And last but not least, MCBDD fifty thousand dollars for the Leonard Kurtz Playground Project. Mr. Whitaker?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of our board, I just wanted to come down and formally thank you. I saw this on the agenda and wanted to bring you some thank you notes from our students that we, we knew that this was gonna be coming at some point, so before the school year ended, we had them.
Can you open them up for us?
Sure, sure.
So, everybody?
Not sure where they can see them on the camera.
Go to the podium.
Come look at them. So, the different, you know, our different classrooms, you know, made you all thank you, so we got a whole bunch of them here.
Just, I'm so very happy. Aw. About our new playground.
I love that.
Someone, someone made us a swing, so thank you, Bart. Over here as well.
And you know what? Let's take, when we bring them back to the office, we're gonna take photos of some of those with us and maybe put it on our Facebook.
Oh, yeah. This is from Room Eleven. They all signed it.
And then this is, so, as you know, they've also been doing like some of their own fundraising with like Aunt Kelly Dinner and also kind of like Kite Society. They, they provided a donation to, some families have. They've raised nearly a hundred thousand dollars on their own, like teachers and, you know, towards the project. Your generous donation, our board has allocated around four hundred thousand, so we, we have quite a bit of money and we're, you know, engaging with a company now to look at concepts of what we can do for our students. But they had kinda had a concept just as a thought or an idea at the lobby of Leonard Kurtz. Every time they raised five thousand dollars, they put like a new puzzle piece and they colored it in. So, this is some of our students, you know, putting up puzzle pieces of their playground and then, you know, getting pictures in front of it. So, I'll keep these with you, but yeah, you can certainly take pictures and post them. But, you know, once again, we just appreciate your continued support of our program.
We'd like to take pictures.
We're gonna have you hold up, each of you guys can hold up.
And you know what, Bill? Bill, why don't you tell them what you're gonna do with the cement pad that's already there?
Yeah, so, we currently have a pavilion that's on the grounds that unfortunately due to age and rot and so, when we were looking.
Age and rot, are you talking about me?
No, 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 I'm talking about.
Do you wanna get it up?
It, it really does need to come down because it's kinda becoming dangerous. So, it's, I think it's fifty by seventy. We're gonna have it resurfaced with like, you know, turf, those type of things so that children that have mobility issues, wheelchairs, or, you know, walkers can kind of engage in the playground, you know, instead of, you know, being on the grass, they'll have a harder surface, so we're really looking forward to updating this. Putting the cash on there for.
Yeah. This is great. This is cute.
For your generous donations to our playground, Emma.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, brothers. Thanks.
Yeah, pitos and.
Bill, did they, they tell you we're gonna put a pictures mound out there so you can, you can.
Some folks wanted a ball field, they're not getting much work done if they put a ball field.
You got that right.
Yeah, we're waiting on Maurice. Checks.
Oh, yes. Okay.
That's like, here we are just.
I'm sorry.
Saw this way.
I'm so used to calling Jimmy. You're just like that one. Thank you, Bill.
Oh, we didn't know that.
Appreciate it.
Four, so. Thank you. Put them up.
Okay.
Oh, I just think that's great. I can't wait till that's done. I mean, they're gonna be, they're just so excited.
Some of the new innovations and equipment for children.
I mean, you know what? We do, it's for everybody else, we need to help those that can't. But thank you. All right, B, Commissioners Recycling.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is just an approval of voucher with ED Parking. We had a date issue on this particular invoice.
C, Engineers?
Commissioners, letter C is a resolution approving moral obligation payment of six hundred fourteen dollars to Gordon Brothers Incorporated. This is for an emergency water pump repair at the District Four Garage in Smith Township near Beloit.
Thank you, Pat. D, Facilities, Alan?
B is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of one thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents to Buckeye Power Sales for emergency repairs due to generator pump failure.
Okay. D, announce.
E is a resolution approving the appointment of one supervisor of buildings. And F is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the AFSCME local level six.
And Karen, do you have anything to add on F? Karen?
You're muted, Karen.
Karen, you're muted.
Karen? Hi, Commissioners, you hear me now? This is a memorandum of understanding, just to add a new classification to the bargaining contract. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Number two resolutions, A through F, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved resolutions. Second?
Roll call. Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. We do have a presentation, and I believe the red zone, someone's coming here from Columbus, is that?
Yes.
Maury, is Maury's coming down?
Maury's was on his way. He thought it was out on the west side at the EMA where we had originally met with him.
Okay.
So, his ETA was extended to get down here and maybe like, I'll wait for him and then we could do the presentation over at the Commissioner's Office. Have a minute?
By the time you guys finish talking, maybe.
I mean.
Maybe he'll be here.
Well, let's, let's see if anyone has any comments. Dave Anthony, before we go forward. Anybody that's on the, on the screen have any comments? You wanna update us, Linda, on what's upcoming in the next couple of weeks? Linda McCollum?
Sure, I was just unmuting. Well, the big thing this weekend, of course, is the Luke Bryan concert down in Ween Park.
Linda, they're building a stage?
Yes.
They haven't even started yet.
Well, forty-two events is pretty quick. I think you'll see some progress today. If, if you are attending the concert and did not purchase advanced parking in the downtown area, they are parking you at the Wick Avenue Parking Deck on YU campus and shuttling you down to the event, you know, because there is a lot of construction down here. So, that was the best solution that they came up with. Ticket sales, from what I understand, have been going very, very well. So, it should be, you know, it should be a great time. Let me look what else here. Car enthusiasts, the Dave and Ed's Super Swap Meet is out at the Campfield Fairgrounds this weekend. There is a quilt show this weekend for people that like that thing at the Quilts in the Gardens, which should be.
Grass.
Grass. The other things happening this weekend at Penguin's, the new Penguin City Brewery that just opened, Fight Night at the Brewery this Saturday, Jack Low's Southside Boxing Club. They're gonna be having an event there, so it would be a good opportunity to see the new brewery and take in Fight Night.
It's gonna be awfully warm in there. You know, air. Thank you. And, and with the parking.
Yeah.
What if, you know, we were questioning on, say, somebody wanted to go to forty-three, that forty-three, you know, the bar, or go over to V-two, or Primachina, or the Avalon, where are they gonna park?
It's no doubt about it, it's gonna be crowded downtown this weekend.
But what I'm saying is they can't block every parking area off because the businesses wouldn't then, how's that gonna happen?
I don't know that they're blocking Federal Street. I'm just saying with the construction, they didn't, you know, the, the best parking option was to use, for the concert, was to use the YU parking deck and shuttle concert attendees.
Wow. That's gonna be difficult.
Yeah, and, and they are, you know, the city has decided to close the Market Street Bridge and the South, the South Avenue Bridge.
They're both closed.
Yes, because they wanna prevent people from standing on the bridge and listening to the concert without buying a ticket. So, it, it's gonna be a challenge, there's no, no two ways about it. Come early.
You know, maybe we could get people, and they'll drop them right there.
Well, they have a special Uber drop-off site.
Yeah, the Uber drop-off site is at ANC Beverage.
Bridge, the bridge won't be closed until six forty-five.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah.
Can I get to the, can I get to our building next door and, and stand in the parking lot and listen?
Well, David.
She's not gonna come down.
Okay. Well, six forty-five, the concert will already be in progress.
Starts at seven.
So, it starts at seven, yeah.
And I mean, most of the people.
He won't go until nine.
Right.
Most of them will be in there, not to least nine, so. I just, you know, I was worried about the businesses, that's, that was my concern. 'Cause I normally come down and go to the Avalon or something, I won't be. At all.
There'll be a lot of people walking up there.
Yeah, that, I, I think you're gonna see a lot of foot traffic, you know, people finding a place to park and then just walking.
Ways open to.
So, I didn't realize that you, that you had to buy a parking pass.
If you wanted the, you know, the closer downtown parking, that was offered when you were buying your ticket.
Oh, okay, all right, it was offered.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, all right. Audrey Morales, you have anything? I can't hear you.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me? Good morning, Commissioners. Audrey, Nancy, Jim. I just wanted to share that Director Dam Schröder, Ohio Director of Job and Family Services, paid Mahoney County a visit, a very welcome visit. He was very proud about how we're operating and what the staff is doing. And I had my administrative staff and all line supervisors come to the reception for him, and it was a good day. He spoke highly of us on his Monday morning call to all of the eighty-eight county directors. He also spoke about his visit here to Mahoney County and what he thought about the great job that we're doing. So, appreciate your support and appreciate that shout-out that he gave us.
Well, thank you, Audrey, for the great up, update. Keep up the good work, you and your agency. Glad to hear good, good things.
There's my, there's my favorite fish fountain.
We have, before we conclude the meeting, before we conclude the meeting, we're going to award Maurice Claret, and I don't know the gentleman with you, you wanna introduce him?
How are you doing? My name is Jay Richardson, just a good friend, associate, supporter of Mr. Claret here.
Okay, good deal. Thank you for coming. So, we wanna award Maurice the check that we're giving to the Little Redman for not only your office furniture, as well as for the Little Redman football team, of which I am so happy that you took that on, Maurice. Red Zone Charities. Thank you. So, I wanna thank you. If you wanna come up and say a few words before we award you the check?
Yeah, well, one, I feel bad, but one, I wanna say thank you all for contributing and helping what is that we have going on, what we're doing. I feel bad because I thought I was going to go out of office on the west side, I didn't dress appropriately.
That's okay, that's all right.
No, so, I feel bad, but thank you. The funding will help to continue what we have going on. Always happy to come home and be involved in community works and business and anything we have going on to approve the area. I think I've communicated that to everybody from everything I've done. Wanna thank everybody who's, you know, made it possible. Obviously, I've rung you line a thousand times to make it happen. The Commissioner's Office, cat over from Struthers, and just everybody who can do it. But I, I really do apologize for being dressed that. I didn't know.
It's all good, you're here. That's nice.
Definitely appreciate it.
You are definitely here. And when they, when the kids start playing football and they have their new uniforms, take a picture with them and send it to us if you would.
Yeah, no, we, we'll definitely do that, and, I don't know, I don't know, I'm, they're kinda coming in impromptu time. So, I just say thank you all.
Thank you. Anna, you wanna come up and we'll present them with the check?
Okay. Can you, where are the checks?
They're back in here.
Well, we took them to the.
Maurice, I was wondering if you can kinda explain a little bit what you're doing at the office building, too?
Yeah.
Uh, which, I guess, which one?
For Red Zone.
Oh, for the Red Zone?
Yes.
For the office, so, the building in Struthers, I, I'll just explain to both buildings. Out of building in Struthers, we'll do all of our psychological, social, emotional support for the kids within the area. We, we interact and engage with about five hundred kids on a daily basis throughout Youngstown and Mahoney County. We will also do our drug and alcohol treatment with adults. We'll have different programming, support for development deals, and we've been doing this for about six or seven years. We've just expanded the space, but, you know, taking over the old school will give us, you know, probably twenty thousand more square feet than we had before in, in Struthers, but we also will do medical services here at four twenty Oak Hill. We'll have pediatric services. There's a vascular surgery center that's almost complete, we gotta go through fire inspections to get that done. There'll be urgent care, there'll be a wound care center, and above that will be other social care services. We're trying to put a Dallas center, so it'll be a medical service building right here at four twenty, so we've been working on that for two years. COVID had kinda slowed it down, but you, you'll have a lot here. I, I've said this before, I don't, I don't know, I'm talking about a few different things, but I said it before, this is where I would like to invest dollars into and partner and focus on with, with what I'm doing in regards to entrepreneurship throughout the state. I don't know if you all know, but we, we own the largest pediatric group in the state of Ohio, own medical practices. And just coming back here trying to, you know, partner with the area for housing some sorts, partner with social services, some ports, some sorts of medical services. I just think that it helps the community, helps the area, helps people for employment. I don't know, it's a whole lot to say, but I just spoke my piece in regards to what we do.
So, you're at one, you had, at four twenty Oak Hill, you, you're, you actually are putting in a medical?
Yeah, we've, we've, that is, we've put in over a million dollars already. But I, this, this is, this is, I'll say what we do for the fact where we can leave here and go there right now. On the first floor, you'll have a vascular surgery center, and that's to help people with amputations and cleaning out arteries for people who have diabetic issues.
Oh, that's great.
On the second floor, you'll have a pediatric office. You have a wound care center, and then you'll have like a walk-in urgent care clinic where people, people can come in and do services. And I didn't, I didn't realize all this was even made available, I didn't know anything about ARP funding. I told you, I don't, I don't know nothing about government, and I'm just being blunt. I don't know what's made available, but I do know that I've put the investment to help in, and this is what we have going on that you can leave out of here, get in the car, go five minutes away and see yourself. And then also, what we've been doing with the Red Zone, prior to COVID, we had, I don't know, had to be at least a hundred and five, a hundred and ten employees that we, that we did, we didn't have any subsidies of any sort, but we employed people here within town and worked directly with Youngstown City Schools and other schools in the adjacent areas. And we work with the courts and people coming off probation and parole, and we house them and do different sorts of recovery housing and transitional housing. So, I'm, I'm never one to put it on Facebook or social media or anything like that, but I think that when I, when I came to see you all over on the west side, I said, "Hey, I don't know how this thing works." But if you're looking for smart help, and we talked on the phone, Mr. Ditster, we talked on the phone, and I was telling you, hey, if you all need anybody to partner with us, some capacity to mobilize some things that you all wanna do, would love to do it.
He should be a partner with Lutz Healthcare, 'cause you're building.
I told him to go see the building to.
I wanna, I wanna see the building, you know.
And it's, it's not like it's.
Also, Maurice, the twenty different entities are being displaced out of the Farm Ward Building across the street, so you may be getting some phone calls to see if you have any space available.
Yeah, so, we definitely have space available. Like I said, this isn't like eye on the sky, this is like, I can call somebody to get keys, and we can walk over there right now, see it. You can also walk down to other places to see it. And I, I would just say, I would just say, I'd say, "Hey, I don't know how this works, but if you all can help me, I love it, but if you don't, I'm still gonna do it," you know? But I think like, I don't know, just my, my, I don't, it's not my thing, but I just think like, like you have to, obviously, I live in Columbus, which we have to. But any of these places you wanna revitalize or hold the people that you have, like, so we have, I don't know, we have about forty different clinics in all throughout the state, in all different counties, rural counties, urban counties, inner-city counties, everything. Like, in order to revitalize places, you have to drive like economic development, like you have to, people have to, you have to be able to do business. And when people come to town, sometimes they don't know how to navigate, or you don't know what's made available for you. I think Nick, I don't think I know Nick Creashen, he's a real good guy, he's been very helpful. We were trying to do a nine percent tax credit development deal up the street, and he was very helpful with putting all the pieces together to help us understand what resources are made available and sort of county funding or state funding or city funding that can be plugged in to offset costs. So, I don't know, there's just a lot of talented people around here who wanna help out.
Also, the Port Authority.
The Port Authority.
Nick would know that.
Yeah, he, he could have been, he could have been helping out, and that, that's, I didn't know. I just like this, anytime I've called him, he's been the most amazing person to help. He's, he's a real good guy, he's real, and he's very smart, he's very smart.
Thank you.
Say it's awesome, thank you.
Checks.
Okay.
We have one. This one's for a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, my Commissioner, Mr. Thomas. That's for the Red Zone office furniture and Struthers. And then this is the Little Red. Contribution.
Come on.
Yeah.
That's good.
I'm getting over here by number thirteen, my favorite number, my favorite football player. My favorite fish falcon.
How's that? Could you see this?
Oh, I got it.
Hold on a second. One second. Not to get beat.
We always say waste up.
I know, I'm trying.
And if this guy doesn't spike that fumble recovery out of the opponent's hands, we don't win the national championship. Yeah, look, I'm telling you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I said, they're just kinda.
Anytime you want to.
Okay.
You know, or Glenn is that?
Yeah. And you know what, Jerry? I also want you to know that Bill Whitaker spoke earlier about the Leonard Kurtz Project, and we gave money for the playground. Leonard Kurtz, Bill, why don't you maybe give him a, a quick rundown of what we did for Leonard Kurtz? Jerry Bruschetti?
Oh, Jerry, yeah, sure, sure. Will you be able to do that?
Yeah.
You can do that after the meeting, you guys finish your meeting and then I can talk.
All right, 'cause what we did is we awarded them fifty thousand dollars for Leonard Kurtz playground project. project, and it's to do a playground for all the kids.
Thank you.
At their facility and all over Mahoney. So, that concludes, that concludes our meeting for today, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes, and the next board meeting will be next Thursday, ten AM, right here in the Commissioners' Conference. I thank everybody for coming. I thank you for driving from Columbus to be here.